Good evening, everybody. Sorry about the delay. Our presentation went a little long this evening, but thank you all for coming tonight. At this time, if you're able to rise, please do so for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin tonight, the board has the pleasure of recognizing Laura McClear as our Board of Education Employee of the Month for October. This month, Mr. Roberts is going to be reading something, and at that time, we have a little whack for you as well. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, so when you're going through all of these and you're reading about all these fantastic things our staff are doing across the district, Laura really jumped out this month, and when you talk about a student-centered educator talking to her parents, that's where her focus is daily. She's a phenomenal communicator, the first one to be working the relationship with her parents, to developing that relationship, trying to forecast her kids' needs, see where they're going, meeting her students where they are, and of course, a fantastic contributor at Learning Leaps. Thank you so much for all of that. Thank you for everything that you continue to do for our school and our district, and we're super proud to be able to award this to you this month.
Congratulations again. We had several nominations this month to choose from, so keep them coming, as we know we have some in our November folder to look at already. So thank you again, and congratulations. At this time, we'll open up the first hearing privilege of the floor. We just ask everybody, we've allotted for 30 minutes, please state your name and address adhered to our five-minute policy if you would like to address the board. Okay. We will close round one of the hearing privilege of the floor. Remind everybody that we have round two towards the end of the meeting, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Schwartz for her comments.
So we have a very brief presentation tonight. Last week, the six committees, as the reimagining our schools big committee, if you will, got together to share their, thank you, work to date. Tonight, as we come together, I'm going to just highlight some of the information that those folks presented, and then I'd like to hear from the board about whether or not you feel we're at a position now where we could commit to closing a school. Not which school, but are we far enough along the road to say, yes, we're going to close and/or repurpose a school. So the grade level configuration work group is recommending that we repurpose, close one of our elementary schools. So far, they have come up with two scenarios. They actually had many more than two, but these are the two options they see as best. And either option would mean that we'd need to create some attendance boundary swing zones so that as we looked at keeping attendance, I'm sorry, keeping class sizes comparable across buildings, that we could move children if we needed to. The attendance boundary group also came to that same conclusion that we should repurpose or close an elementary school. They believe that SAC and Glendale should remain open, that Glendale and Glen Warden would work as K-2 centers and SAC as our 3-5 center. And that was also the thought of Mr. Arquette's group. SAC would need to be the 3-5 center if we were going to have a single 3-5 school because it's our largest school. That we could consider non-eligible transportation zones being expanded. You know, we are very well within the limits of what State Ed recommends for transportation zones. And then they're looking for buffer zones, which is basically swing zones also. Human resources and personnel know the direction they need to move in, but we will need a little more.[421.12]
Okay, there we go. Good, all right. Good evening, everybody. Sorry about the delay. Our presentation went a little long this evening, but thank you all for coming tonight. At this time, if you're able to rise, please do so for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we begin tonight, the Board has the pleasure of recognizing Laura McClear as our Board of Education Employee of the Month for October. This month, Mr. Roberts is going to be reading something, and at that time, we have a little whack for you as well. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, so when you're going through all of these and you're reading about all these fantastic things our staff are doing across the district, Laura really jumped out this month, and when you talk about a student-centered educator talking to her parents, it's, that's where her focus is daily. She's a phenomenal communicator, the first one to be working the relationship with her parents, to developing that relationship, trying to forecast her kids' needs, see where they're going, meeting her students where they are, and of course, a fantastic contributor at Learning Leaps. Thank you so much for all of that. Thank you for everything that you continue to do for our school and our district, and we're super proud to be able to award this to you this month.
Again, we had several nominations this month to choose from, so keep them coming, as we know we have some in our November folder to look at already. So, thank you again and congratulations. At this time, we'll open up the first hearing and privilege of the floor. We just ask everybody, we've allotted for 30 minutes, please state your name and address adhered to our five-minute policy if you would like to address the Board. Okay. We will close round one of the hearing and privilege of the floor. Remind everybody that we have round two towards the end of the meeting, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Schwartz for her comments.
So, we have a very brief presentation tonight. Last week, the six committees, as the reimagining our schools, big committee, if you will, got together to share their, thank you, work to date. Tonight, as we come together, I'm going to just highlight some of the information that those folks presented, and then I'd like to hear from the Board about whether or not you feel we're at a position now where we could commit to closing a school. Not which school, but are we far enough along the road to say, yes, we're going to close and/or repurpose a school? So, the grade level configuration work group is recommending that we repurpose, close one of our elementary schools. So far, they have come up with two scenarios. They actually had many more than two, but these are the two options they see as best. And either option would mean that we'd need to create some attendance boundary swing zones so that as we looked at keeping attendant, I'm sorry, keeping class sizes comparable across buildings, that we could move children if we needed to. The attendance boundary group also came to that same conclusion, that we should repurpose or close an elementary school. They believe that SAC and Glendale should remain open, that Glendale and Glen Warden would work as K-2 centers and SAC as our 3-5 center. And that was also the thought of Mr. Arquette's group. SAC would need to be the 3-5 center if we were going to have a single 3-5 school because it's our largest school. That we could consider non-eligible transportation zones being expanded. You know, we are very well within the limits of what State Ed recommends for transportation zones. And then, they're looking for buffer zones, which is basically swing zones also. Human resources and personnel know the direction they need to move in, but we will need a little more solid information moving forward in terms of class size configuration and attendance boundaries for them to really get moving. So, they're anxious to do that, but again, we need to get a little closer to what the decision will be. Staff and student transitions has done a nice job of looking at what each of our schools does individually, talking about similarities. We are more similar than dissimilar. They've talked about mascots, about events, about how we could get kids together before we started moving people. So, they too have great ideas. They're just waiting for us to come to a little closer landing on what we're going to do here. Our communication work group continues to be very diligent. They're beginning to talk about communication for kids, a webinar about change, navigating change, and how we might continue to communicate in even more ways. So, they're talking about a physical mailer based on the information that came out of last week's meeting. The repurposing a school work group is getting ready to distribute their survey, which asks for concerns that community members might have, and then will allow us to gather data and analyze and explore other uses for a school building. And certainly, my team has put some interesting ideas out there already, and we're interested in hearing what other folks might say. So, what I need for you to help me with tonight is some direction. So, my bottom-line question is, is the Board ready to commit to the repurposing or closing of an elementary school? Now, you know that I said originally you would make a final recommendation in February, but certainly, in listening to the groups, folks are hoping we can at least get to the point where tonight we would know, yes, the Board can support that we would repurpose or close an elementary school. That will allow the configuration group and the attendance boundary group, I saw some emails going back and forth today, they're trying to figure out when they could get together to talk about a final recommendation based on the information from both of those groups. So, if we can get to the point tonight where the Board can give me this direction, that yes, we are ready to repurpose or close an elementary school, again, not which school, but this is the direction we're going in, that will help us as we begin to plan for budget, but it will also help our work groups as they begin to plan next steps. That said, Mr. Talbot, I'll turn it over to you.
Sorry about that. If there were some background noises there on the microphones, it's, these new microphones All right. I'll start. I am for repurposing or closing one of the elementary schools, as I had mentioned it last year during budget season, so that's, that's my vote. So, we can go around the room if we'd like to, or, RJ?
I'm not ready yet because I know our group, the attendance boundary group, discussed that we're going to meet with the, I forgot the name, the other group, and tentatively, we're going to meet next Wednesday all together, try to figure out, so far, been what they said, we said, so kind of get together, have a good conversation. I think after that, next board meeting, I'll be ready to go by then, so, and right now, I have no decision.
Thank you.
Or no.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm going to say, group is, as Mr. Singh, and I am, I'm ready to close or repurpose a school.
Thank you. Kimmy?
I am on the transition team, and I am ready to repurpose or closing a school.
Thank you. Kim Fresh?
Based on looking at the projections report today, I am going to have a lot of questions about that. I warned Drew already that I was going to, but based on what I'm reviewing, that it looks like even though things were a little better than we were expecting, we're still going to be pretty significantly lower. So, I believe we need to close or repurpose a school. However, I, I was at the meeting the other night, and it felt like Lincoln was just dropped off, not as an example. So, to me, I feel like I need to know financially and transportation-wise with respect to all the schools, and it's an example, not automatically cutting out Lincoln. So, I would like, I definitely would like to see that, but that still doesn't change my decision tonight that closing a school appears to me to be necessary.
Thank you. Chad?
Based off all the data, it's, it's not a want-to, it's a have-to, so unfortunately, it would be a yes for me.
Great. Pam?
You have to unmute yourself. I can't unmute her. She has to mute herself.
Well, Pam, we can't hear you, so if you can hear us, maybe like a thumbs up for a thumbs down?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. There we go. Anything else on your portion tonight?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to reports and updates legislative. Kim Furnish?
Yes, there was actually something I felt was very important, and I wish we had seen it sooner, but this past week, week and a half ago, the Board of Regents introduced an amendment that there's going to be two mandates, one for personal financial literacy education and also for climate education as a high school graduation requirement. Grades five through 12 must add these two programs by the 2027-2028 school year, and then K through four is a year after that. They don't have to be their own separate classes. Each district can determine how best to provide that education, but like the personal financial, finance instruction is to teach our students how to budget, money manage, credit and other debt, earning income, risk management, saving and investing, and then the climate education's going to focus on the cause and effects and solutions to climate change. And I think they're two very good ideas to have for our kids. They definitely need to learn that.
Absolutely.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. PTA Council, Chad?
A lot of meetings coming up. On the 13th, the PTSA, we're meeting at 6:00 PM in High School Room B2. On the 17th, the Middle School PTA will be having their meeting at 6:00 PM here in the Middle School LMC. On the 18th, Glen Warden will be having theirs at 6:00 PM at the Glen Warden LMC. On the 19th, Council will be meeting for the first time this year at 6:00 PM Glen Warden LMC. Lot of business going through there. And then, on the 21st, the Middle School will be hosting Teen Town, 6:00 PM. They are still looking for volunteers, so if you're on Facebook, they have a sign-up genius. Hop on there, see how you can help if you're able to, and other than that, that's what we've got for the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you, Chad. Audit Committee, nothing new to update on Audit Committee?
The Medicaid Audit commenced, so that's underway, and then in January will be the risk assessment.
Beautiful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board of Education Policy. Mike?
How are you on the panelists?
Well, we have the...
Do we have a discussion on it, or?
Yeah, this is where we go through updates and reports, yeah.
Okay. I've been poring through all the policies and just trying to figure out what is what with what policies and comparing them to other schools. I am for going to a program called Board Docs, which has everything kind of state-mandated and gives us the legal edge on it. I know it's a lot of work, and I know it's a big change, but some of the policies that I've been through, some of them are dated 1988, and I know that we've gone through them and adjusted them for the pronouns a couple of years ago, but some of the policies we have in there are policies that aren't being followed, or they're, our cybersecurity is based on 2014, and I know things have changed since then. We have English as a second language, which hasn't been looked at since 1990, and I'm pretty sure that's, that's got to be updated as well. So, I would love to have a conversation with the seven of us, or six and Pam, about what the best way moving forward is to get all the policies up to date, so they're all standardized with the schools around us, so that we're all kind of in the same direction.
I mean, I told you at the meeting that it's highly appealing to be able to maximize the NISBA services, since that's already under their umbrella that we're paying for right now. I like the idea that would be dress-right dress across the state with our peers. I like that it would give us an ability to focus in on some of these policies that need to be looked at every year, like cybersecurity and others. So, for me, I mean, I'm really in agreement with hopping on board, that I really think that would bring us up to speed.
Kimmy, you had a beautiful way of saying it that I couldn't say ever again, but...
So, we kind of have a conversation. We were talking about our policies versus other school district policies and how they look, and yes, some policies are going to be based off of the Schleswig-Glenville, but making sure our policies are not biased, making sure that they cover, it's black and it's white, and it covers different opportunities, but yet not for interpretation. So, making sure that, yes, we are working with Burnt Hills, or we're working with Shenandoah or we're working with any school district around us, that our policy, we're all speaking the same language. So, when we have students moving here, or we have staff moving here, it kind of puts us all on the same level of language in taking out any of those biases. But also, we were talking about overlaying policies and looking at saying, are we missing anything? Are we not missing anything? What can we bring to our school district that we don't have, and what do we not need? I mean, some of them still have telephones or, you know, dial-up things on there, that we've taken most of them out, and a bunch of those have come to us to be taken out recently, but just looking at our verbiage and making sure that we are really all speaking the same way and making sure that it takes care of everybody, it's black and white.
I'm happy to reach out to NISBA and have them cover us for Board Docs. There is a charge.
That's not covered under, okay.
No, I would be surprised. That's why I won't be happy to reach out and get them to give me the skinny on that.
Yeah, they don't do much for free.
He said our policy was covered. I forgot the gentleman I talked to, but there was, there was a gentleman. They're always trying to sell something, I assume.
But I, but I, let me call. Let me see what I can do. I'll have that on the 24th.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. My note, Mike, when you reached out, I thought that was a great idea that we do it. Good.
Mrs. Furnish is awful quiet.
I agree. I, I, I think it's a good idea to take a look at it. I think it's good to, to be equal with every other district, and there's times when I'm looking up things and you get 25 districts saying one thing, and then I can't find ours. So, I think it's good, it'll be easier for access for people to be able to see and read what they need to see and read, and I am very anti-old policies, so to use Mike's favorite word, I'd like them to be contemporaneous at the times for now, so...
I did look that up.
Yeah, we've gone through every policy over the last four years. We've gone through, you know, Pam has really taken the time to look through each policy and go through, and it takes time for those all to be updated and brought to us, but, so now is the time for going to be looking at things really compare.
Yes, and thank you to Pam for that. I know she worked very hard, and I know you worked hard on it too, Kim.
It was even before me.
I know. That's what I'm saying. Especially Pam, she's been on it a long time, and appreciate that.
All right. Good.
... Because we started this four or five years ago, and we are now right at the end of a position of a first phase of getting these finished and having the vocabulary correct, having the information there correct, and we need to finish that and then move on to look at policies that we may want to change. But we have to get these things to where they are in proper form right now before we go on and just throw all this five years' work away and have all of this still undone.
I think I got most of that. I don't think anybody's throwing anything away. I think what we're going to do is reach out to NISBA, and Susan's going to reach out to get Board Docs to see if there is a cost, what it is, if they can help us streamline all policies so we're, we're similar to, as Kimmy said, to other districts and to update all of our policies at once.
But it's not, it's not going to be, because every district has their own set, has their own numbers and everything else.
Right. Yeah, understandable. I'm more worried about the policies than what the number is. Right, I get that, Pam. We get that. The numbers might be different, but it's still what the policy is, so numbers are numbers. Just my two cents, sorry, but...
Let me get the information.
Right. So, we'll investigate that, and then Susan will get back to us in two weeks.
Yeah.
All right. Board of Education Goals, we will talk about in a moment, and then Budget, we will talk about in a few moments when Drew, we get the, accept the first fiscal projection, but we don't have it in our reporter updates, but Michael had asked me to take a couple of minutes and give us an update from his perspective, so I said 100%. So, the fore's yours, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about some of the student accomplishments that have happened in the past couple of weeks, mainly in the high school. With the athletics, the varsity girls tennis team was able to attend the state championship tournament and placed within the top four in the state, which I think is incredible. Same goes with the varsity girls cross-country team. Two students have been selected from that team to attend the state tournament this Saturday. And the varsity cheer team was also able to pass sectionals, get into the state tournament, where they placed fifth in the state. I think this is a great accomplishment. I'd like to congratulate all those teams. Additionally, lastly, I'd like to mention that the high school drama just finished up their production, their first fall production, where they performed a night of scenes and songs. They had a great turnout, a great crowd. A lot of them were happy with how it turned out, and sights are set for a little mermaid this spring.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody on those. All right. Moving on to discuss and adopt hopefully 25, 26 Board of Education Goals. Everybody has them in the email, again, in the doc. So, on here, I believe there's three that were written down. I know Kimmy said that she had had one potentially. I know the one that I had brought up, which was the Coffee with Susan or whatever, actually, the first meeting or session was last Thursday. There were seven or eight parents there and community members. It was fantastic. It was a great group of people that brought ideas to us. We got some, congratulations, some kudos as a district from the transition between elementary to middle school this year, which was fantastic, so hats off to that transition team. And there's some parents that shared their personal experiences and really were looking for a roadmap on how they can do things for themselves and for their children, so it was, it was encouraging. It was a little over an hour, hour and 20 minutes, I think, and we'll plan the next one, and then it'll go out on Parents' Square to see if anybody wants to, to volunteer to come back. Is it next week?
It's next week, but yes, we'll get, get them out.
Time flies. All right. Good. So, it was well-attended, so that was not on the list, since we already are actually doing that, so... Who wants to start with Board Goals? If we all see them and have them up to...
I'll start with...
To look at them?
So, mine was the first one on there, communication-based, trying to build up on what we accomplished last year, hit the points on it, really to build trust and identify our key community partners or groups by implementing multi-reach strategy. I cut it down some, like I said at the last meeting, we're kind of short on time, so it needs to be shotgunned down. I thought that having timely plain-language summaries of the board meetings shared on district communications within five business days, I think that's something we maybe did at one point, so really just bringing that back. I think that was really helpful during budget season for individuals to be able to easily digest what we were talking about. And then, I want to implement a structured exit interview process in collaboration with SGTA, develop and launch a... SGTA, develop and launch a standardized exit interview protocol by June of this coming year to gather actionable feedback from departing employees with the goal of achieving 80% participation among exiting staff and producing a biannual summary report to inform retention strategies and workplace improvements. The third bullet, I wanted to take it out, but I left it in, introducing two new communication formats, community open houses, in-person forums, shore explainer videos, Q&amp;A forums to clarify key decisions, initiatives and to strengthen community relations. Ironically, some we're working on in the communications subcommittee of taking the one letter that went up on the website and just kinda breaking it down, it almost looks like a text, like a text conversation, which I think is kinda neat and easily, easy to take in. Like, so I want this to be accomplished with zero financial output from us. So that's basically it in a nutshell. Like I said, the third bullet, I would be fine to cut that down because I know that's kind of, we were thinking, well, who would be responsible for that? Or we put more on Julia, which she already has so much already, but that's kinda what I brought to the table.
Kathy, in our last board meeting, we had talked a bit about perhaps you putting something together in terms of exit interviews, in terms of talking to staff and sharing it with the rest of the board and then sharing it here so that we could get that to Joe Bush and start talking about how we would incorporate that into our HR processes.
Yeah, there was an email communication on that, just with the board and it kinda came at a standstill. I'm trying to recall, I think it all came down to time. I'm all set, I can share that with the group once again to take a look. I obviously wanna speak to our partners over at SGTA, if that's even a possibility, but that seemed like the best.
I'm sure they'd be more than willing to help you with the questions.
Okay, that seemed like the ideal way to do it, yeah.
But I do think HR is the right spot for it.
Sure. I can get that out by the, in a week.
Absolutely.
What's your thought process or who's putting the summaries of BOE meetings out within five business days?
I mean, that would be something on media relations. There's a couple of strategies that if I was gonna do it, how, how I would approach it, she's a professional, so if it's something that would be chosen, it'd be something that works for her or whoever would be putting it up. So I felt that what came out during budget season was ideal.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
So if we could replicate that, maybe a little more casual, that would be great. I think that would eliminate a lot of, you're gonna make it easy to access the information that goes on at the meetings, not everyone has 90 minutes or more to digest a YouTube video so they could go through bullet points of, okay, we're talking about where we're at physically right now, we're talking about reimagining, we're seeing this because, oh, we say life for all of us right now, it's kinda like driving on a freeway. It comes at you so fast, it has to be like a billboard. So if we put it out there, we're trying to get the information in front of our stakeholders where they can, we can only take people so far, but we're trying new ways to say, hey, this is what's going on for this iteration, so...
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any input or questions on the first suggestion?
I do like communications as one of our...
And I can cut that third bullet out, like I said, I understand, we're in mid-November, so I feel if we cut that out, but we kinda keep it in mind if we have an opportunity, but I think that's pretty easily achievable.
All right, we can move on to the second one. Furnish, was that yours?
Yes, with respect to the budget. I know we talked previously that we thought it would be good to have a goal to make sure that our budget and the process to get to that budget is a goal for us this year. I did say develop a budget calendar by October 1. We're obviously a little behind on that. I do think a budget calendar is a good idea though, not only for us to keep track of, but to let the public know where we are and to have some guideposts. We are already working on the reimagining our schools committee and the subcommittees. I do think it's good to have in the goal that we expect the results by the end of January with respect to recommendations. I do think it's important to remind ourselves that we need to review the reports monthly at the board meetings, discuss any variances and make sure we're asking pertinent questions about it. I would like us to see if we can explore as a group additional opportunities for cost sharing and collaboration. We do, we do have a great start in so many areas with respect to our insurance and with respect to other items, electricity, utilities, that sort of thing. So I would like to see if we can do that in other areas as well as trying to pursue grants. The communication piece, I could probably take that out since we already have the communication piece discussing in the previous goal, but I do think it's important and I think we're doing a good job with the reimagining, we're imagining, I can't, everyone knows what I'm talking about, reimagining the district, to make sure that our, what's going on with the budget throughout the year is understandable to the public and where we are on a monthly basis. So that's my thoughts on, on the goal that I wrote. And I do think another piece is that, I think it's good for this year, but I think this should be a goal that we think about every year because it's gonna come up, we're gonna have potential issues and pitfalls and you never know what's gonna happen, so it's good to have these kinda goals to do every year, not just necessarily this year.
Yeah, I liked it, we spoke about that last year, about the timeline of another district that you had found and you shared, and I know we talked about it. I think it's, it was great to lay out the meetings and this is what we're gonna talk about, this is what's supposed to be today, now we're behind, hey, we're ahead.
Right.
That way the community knows too, the whole community, just not segments of it, knows exactly what our timeline is when we're talking about our budget. So I'm in favor of this goal. Other thoughts?
I like that, it gives us a little organize so we know like, hey, we're, we're behind and we're ahead, just like Hal had said, I like that idea and putting those together and yes, you know, taking that one thing out because it's already November, but I like that.
I just like communications on both of them. I'd love the idea of getting more information out, maybe, maybe having more or less, I don't know what the right word is, but fluff is coming to mind, like if we just got the information out there and put it in a way, the billboard idea, I kinda like that thought process too, but communication from us, from the school, to everyone and not just on Parent Square, not just on, like making sure that people can find it easily.
Well, and with respect to the budget especially, it's, it's not just a Parent Square issue, it's a community issue.
Right.
We need to make sure that the community as a whole knows what's going on with our budget timeline, with how we're doing on the budget throughout the year. So we, the community is not gonna be saying to us, this is a complete surprise. That is partially on us and how we communicate that information out with the budget.
Absolutely.
So maybe having a tab in a district website, that we have right now put a ROS, a budget tab and you click on it and see what's going on, what we looked at, what we talked about already, type of something, so there, it wasn't in the loop?
Yeah, with, Hal was talking about, what I had found, another school district actually had all of that information in a budget tab, and we do have a budget tab, but I think it would be good to have an actual timeline of when to expect things so the public knows where we are with respect to the budget, not only for this year, but in preparation for the budget for the following year.
Yeah, it was similar to how our board tab has like all the dates of our meetings on it, so it was similar to that. When you clicked that, it was all right there listed by day and what to expect or what the plan was by that certain day or meeting.
Well, we can certainly take the budget tab one issue with you every year and start with that.
That'd be great.
Would it, did it show like updates too, like as you guys, as that school had it, so did it say, this is what was presented before, so now this is what you should expect for the next meeting?
I'll, I can resend it, what I found, to show you what we're talking about, but I think that's a, I don't know if it necessarily had that, but I think it's a good idea as you get to that date to say whether or not it actually happened or if it got rescheduled or postponed or what have you, depending on what the situation is.
Yeah, I could have a link inside the date, but it's like ours is blue, I think, that you click on the blue and it tells you exactly what happened. It could be the same thing with this, it could be blue or whatever color we want. And then you open that up and it says, hey, this is what we accomplished, hey, we're behind here, we're ahead of here. Yeah, no, I think that's a very good goal and achievable. All right, moving on, number three, and there was no name next to it, so I'm not sure...
It was mine.
Okay, sorry, thanks, sir.
So obviously, you know, this year, last year, we see a lot of staff members, teachers leaving us and it kinda requires a little bit of getting more retention, now that my focus, having this year focus on teacher and staff retention. And hopefully, you know, maybe the end of this year, we even starting next year, we could work on, I got a couple of bullet points here on improving, you know, administrative support, you know, providing clear communication, you know, offering constructive feedback. And other bullet points I had were working with teachers and staff and reducing burnout, you know, make sure that they're not overworked, they feel, you know, they're not, well, support from the teachers or the principals or what have you. And also, you know, provide relevant and engaging professional development opportunities at, you know, October 10th and date. And also you have, again, mentorship programs for new and tenured teachers that can help them grow and stay motivated. And also, a key one I had is giving the teachers and staff a voice, involving staff in school-level decisions, you know, such as curriculum choices and policy development, you know, can help them, you know, be more invested in district, feel like they're wanted more, they're, you know, have a purpose here. That's mostly the goal there.
All right, thoughts, questions?
I might piggyback on to Chad's first goal in terms of what's found, you know, because I think, like right now, today's Professional Development Day is planned by a committee that's also staffed with teachers as well as administrators who helped plan both the mornings activities and then the wellness activities. So all of the schools have reinstituted their shared decision-making committees, so there are ways, but it could be that through what your goal suggests, Chad, that we actually find other things that we don't currently do.
That would be the hope.
Yeah, that we could also incorporate. So I'm wondering if those two things could kind of come together. That's just my personal thought.
Whatever makes it work.
I mean, something we need to, we should focus on every year, I would hope this is something we look at when we evaluate ourselves, what's our retention rate? Coming from the military, that was always, what's your retention rate, what's your retention rate, why are they leaving? Every troop that left my platoon, I knew why, whether it be the hate of the army or we got better opportunity, I knew each one of them, and that's valuable data. And right now, it's just walking out and I think that can help us grow, be better when we do.
So I apologize, I'm looking off at Hal's computer because my Google Docs Megan is not working, so I can't pull anything up on it, so I'll be with you after. So mine is, mental health was one of my big things there and, you know, after talking to Hal a little bit, you know, it's something that I could probably move off a little bit because as we're reimagining the schools, that's been a focus of the team that I'm on, the tag team, we talked a lot about mental health with students and stuff. But my original proposal was taking mental health and maybe taking it a step further, looking at our students who have left our district because they have anxiety and can't attend school.
Happy Fourth of July.
Students and say, do we have a program for students who can't get through the door for mental health reasons? Instead of them being homeschooled, what can we do to further that and more support for students and our staff as we reimagine our schools? That seems like it's going to be part of that program because we talked a lot about mental health in our tag group. So, mental health is always gonna be a board goal of mine to do different things, so if I need to move mine back, I know it's a focus that we are looking at as a school district right now, so...
Correct. Through the staff and students, I believe, and then certainly the...
The HR.
...hubs will need to, as we get closer to a decision, will need to consider those things also.
Yes, I know that it's a focus in the district, so if I, I will happily pull mine back just so we can get to all of them because there's some great ones that are on here right now.
Questions, thoughts for Kimmy? All right. So at this point in time, are we ready to decide which ones? We always seem to have this every year where we have a lot of great goals and we just need to be specific on, so we can concentrate on a couple, not multiple goals to try to knock off. So I think it'll take our attention to, I know a few years back, I think we had five or six and that was way too many goals, so what's everyone's flavor, everybody's thoughts? I'll share mine quick, I think Kim Furnish's, that's the, an easy one for us to do, I think it's collective, it's there. I think Karjit and Chad's is good, I just get leery myself personally on the whole HR aspect of it, of exit interviews, the majority of people don't fill those out. There's lots of reasons why and I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, by all means to know why people are leaving, I just get nervous if the board should be playing in the HR realm. Again, I'm one of seven, but that's a sticky line in my opinion to cross with the board and being in HR territory. But I think combining them is a good idea if we can figure out how as a board we can do that without crossing any line, to be more involved, to show more appreciation, how we can retain, but the whole human resource thing just concerns me a little bit. Speak up, whatever.
I think Kimberly's is a great one and one that should be number one, that's, I mean, it's one of our primary duties, so I really like how it's a roadmap, how it gives us almost hit points, where we need to be, where we can give ourselves a report card, we can almost give the community a report card where we're at on our primary test, so I think that should be number one with the bullet. You know, I kinda wince to think we would drop mental health, I think that's such an important thing nowadays and it's such, still such an underlooked thing. I think that goes, that's up there for me, especially seeing where there's some stuff that kinda crosses, me and Karjit's stuff kinda crosses, you know, communication is important, but you can't be talking if you're not functioning as you should, so I kinda wince at thinking we would put that aside. Otherwise, you know, I love Karjit's goal and, you know...
I kinda think the combination of your two together, I think works really well. I think the budget is huge for us right now, that would be very helpful for us to have that, what Kim's proposing. I also think that with us reimagining our schools, that's a big thing that we need to focus on too, so that can be like a focus for us as a goal. You know, I'm always gonna be a mental health advocate, so if we think that, you know, we're not gonna be able to support it through the reimagining our schools, then if you guys wanna put that back in, that's fine with me. But I think that if we're gonna have three, reimagining our schools, budget and communications are three strong ones. So, I mean, I would love to see us come up with more pathways to graduation. That was one of the things that we had talked about, but that's something that we can work on, you know, with Rick and Susan on that goal also.
Behind your goal, goal number two is huge. I think that Mr. Singh's goal, we could just quantify a number. If we start looking at the turnover rate statistically to see how many people are actually leaving and not do anything about it, but just mention it and talk about it, and it's gonna be a har, awful conversation because we're losing, we lost good people and we seem to be losing a couple more good people. But I think if we just address the fact that this is our retention rate from 2024 to 25, 25 to 26 and we make note of it, and then if we have to, then we can figure out without getting in the HR world, you know, where are we sitting?
Absolutely.
And that's something we can self-grade and that, then it becomes an easy goal. We're going to talk about it at some point in May or June or July, this is the retention rate, this is, these are the people we lost and if we know the reason why, we can talk about it. If we don't know the reason why, you know, that's not, that's not our business, we don't run the school, Mrs. Swartz does. But at the end of the day, if we can do anything to help keep people here, I'm 100% behind it. But even if we just quantify it, quantifying it and talking about it might be the best thing that we can do instead of trying to exp on it.
I agree, start the dialogue.
And then, then number three. And then, then number three becomes attainable.
So I'm going to get to Kim on that, with the budget. It was going to be a question. I'd like to see that, you know, more evolved, more, you know, hands-on, more community involved. With Kimmy's, mental health, I always feel like it's a rolling thing. It's a rolling goal. Because every year it changes, things change, you know, rules change, the state laws change. I think that's going to be the rolling, you know, goal for us. For us, the next board, working next board, there's a rolling, and we should always focus on it every year. And the goal I have, retention, yes, Hal's right. Exit reviews are a little touchy with HR around, but at the time, by that time, exit reviews are already off the door, they're gone. As, as Charlie was saying, let's get in front of it and, you know, talk to people we have already here, kind of keep them from leaving. So that's kind of where I'm getting at too. I don't want to say that they're doing exit reviews all day long. I don't want that, keep them here. So, I guess that's where I'm at with that right now, so.
So perhaps if I could make a suggestion. And Chad, since you've been coordinating the document, do you think we're at a point where you could put together three basic goals that we could bring on the 24th for the board to adopt, based on tonight's discussion?
I think that would be easy enough. It's, as long as I know which three we want to roll with, then I think that's something that could be facilitated digitally.
So do we want to do communications, budget, and mental health? Is that what?
Well, it sounds like everyone is really for the budgeting goal. So I think that's, I think that's everyone's number one. And then the other two, it seems like there's some strong feelings as far as mental health, that should almost be a rolling goal, which I don't disagree with that at all. I don't know, what's the pulse of everyone else? Because we got to adhere on, at least part of my goal and part of Carnjet's is, well, where do we do this? How do we do this without treading in territory we're not supposed to be in? So.
If you were to adopt Mike's idea as a board, that we go back and look at retention rates, which the state tracks as well, we could certainly do a bit of a prospect, retrospective about that in terms of at least having data.
Yeah, I'd like to see that data, and then make the plan after we see the data. You know, does it go from, I don't know how far back, obviously, '20 was a disaster, '21 those days, but at least the last few years, and what we're pacing out potentially this year. And then possibly, then we can make a decision from there as far as what the game plan's going to be, without seeing the data. I think we all have an idea of numbers in our head, obviously, from our agendas and updates. But if we see that number and quantify that data, then we can figure out, we can go from there.
And can we see that with trends for the other school districts? Is that possible to see?
I don't know if we can swing that. We're a little short-staffed in this right now.
I know, I'm just saying, is that something like.
We will pull together what we can.
I appreciate that.
If the state publishes, I'm sure we can find it, we can be detectives and find it on our own if it, if it's something the state publishes for every district.
Yes. It's part of the school report card, but I want to caution you about the way that number is calculated, because it also includes people who go on leave but come back to us. People who are out on long-term sub but come back to us. But for that giving, they're part of your retention rate. So that's why I'm saying comparing us to other districts isn't necessarily helpful.
And I agree with that. I think let's focus on our front yard first, and then once we get our data on there, then if we want, we can look, well, what's our neighbors to our left and right doing? Which isn't always a fair comparison, because our next-door neighbors aren't us. So I think we focus on us first, then we can expand if we, if we choose to.
I was wondering too, if maybe we can ask each of our associations to provide information as well with respect to this issue. Because they may get more information than we, the district may necessarily get.
I would be very wary about doing that again, only because your, the information they might choose to share with the association they might not want shared with.
Oh, I agree with that, and I, I'm, none of these people have any requirement to provide any information to us, whether it's an individual or an association. I don't think any of us want any of them to feel like they're being forced into this by any means. But to discuss it generally, and they're going to know better than, than we would as to what their members would, would or would not want to share. I can't imagine any of them sharing information that their people don't want them to share. It was just a thought.
I think starting with what is statistically accurate information is a good place for the board to start. Again, I think you might, I'm not saying people have not left, they have. But before we determine that that's a problem, especially at a time when we're talking about closing a school, I think going back and looking at what we statistically know might be a good start, at least by.
I agree with that. Setting our baseline so we know what factually is, and then that could be another layer of where we explore going forward from there. I agree with that.
And I would also say, certainly, under the reimagining our schools work that's being done, mental health, teacher retention, staff comfort, all of those things are part of those group discussions that are going on. So, even if you don't adopt a specific goal, if you go back and look at the charges for each of those groups, you'll see that in there.
So what are we looking at? So, just so I know, when I go down and start cutting the doc down to submit to everybody.
So we have the budget timeline.
Which I'm getting, that that's, that's number one with the bullet, right? All right.
And then we had, these are the notes I took. Track the retention, well, the retention goal and track the data on staffing. We can look at the school report card data, but that might be skewed a little bit.
Yeah, it is.
And then under that, I had, this way we can try our best again, in front of why folks are leaving, and what we can do to prevent that going forward. That's my notes.
Okay, so we need some editing over on your goal, which, if you can go for that, or if you want, I could take that liberty.
We'll work together.
Okay. And I could reshare the link so everyone has access to it, but hack away at it, and, you know, you communicate. So we're running with that one then? Okay. And then a third, are we doing communication, are we doing mental health? What is, because I got strong mental health leanings, and I heard strong for communications as well. So, what are we feeling as far as, the third goal, if we even want a third goal? Because it is, it's a busy year.
Great, but I don't know how you're going to measure it. I don't know how we're going to measure mental health as an achievable goal.
That's why I was leaning towards communications after, because we were looking at it so much in the reimagining schools, and it's always been a focus, but right now, those, what we were thinking for mental health is going to come out in the reimagining and as we're setting programs. So, that's why I had said communications.
Okay, so do we, do we feel good about putting the communications up?
Yeah, I think it's attainable.
And I kind of chop it down a little bit?
Yeah. Make it, make it measurable and attainable, please.
Michael, is there an option to talk to the Student Senate about maybe helping the board with communication? Get them involved a little bit?
Absolutely, yeah.
Recap notes of what we're doing, you know, help us, work with us.
Yeah, sure, Michael, I thought you had some really great points a few meetings back about engaging the student population, right?
Yes, correct.
I'll get the doc out with you too, and then feel free, if you can, pull those in, because I thought those were really great ideas, and I don't want those to get lost.
Okay, yep, I can get that done, and I can get their feedback.
And then by the time we circle back up the next meeting, we will have a definitive to-be-voted-on set of goals?
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for joining, Chad.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. All right, moving on. If I can get a motion, please, to accept the first fiscal projection for '25, '26.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the first fiscal projection of 2025, 2026.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Kim. All right, Ms. Murner.
Yeah, just give me, sorry, I'm looking for my, okay.
She has some questions for Drew.
I did.
Well, we all have questions for Drew.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, thanks, Drew.
Drew probably wants to speak first, maybe? Yeah, thank you.
Are you ready?
Go, Mike, you want to go? You want to speak first? Go for it.
So, as an extract of what's in your narrative, produce kind of a document that can take you quickly through speed numbers and where we are. So the first projection will take you basically back to where we were a year ago at this time, looking forward, and to why I'm projecting what I am looking forward about nine months at this point. So, I start out with the fund balance, which is our unrestricted savings account. We started the year with $1,138,000. And I'm projecting after, to add another $1,009,000 to it at this point, which would get us up to $3,030,000. The board should note that we use $4.358,000 to balance the budget, which is consistent with our historical, about 6.7% of our budget is supported by our fund balance. So to get to that 4.3, we need to generate another $1.3 million surplus during the year. So although I say things are favorable, which is an accounting terminology, when you spend less than you budgeted or take in more funds than you budgeted, you can see that to close a gap of what we've used to support the budget. We still have a ways to go. It's early, and I basically am committing that I look at the million, $1.9 million as something that we should generate. As you go down to why we're a little better than a year ago, about half a million. Special ed, a year ago, as you all remember, we had an influx of nine additional students above and beyond what we budgeted, and we had a deficit that we had to reallocate funds. This year, we're trending a little favorably, so that's a half a million dollar swing, and that's the swing in fund balance right now. Basically, because right now, we're doing a little better on our tuition placements than we were a year ago. But as the board has heard, it's a very tumultuous environment. And if you look down below going forward, at this point, I show special ed on budget. I don't give you any savings other than the grant subsidies on salaries. It's too early. But right now, we're trending favorably on the audit district placements, but that can evaporate with three or four students in the pipeline, or three or four students that may be in district that go out. So I don't show savings there, but right now, I'm not showing a deficit either, so that's, that's good. State aid runs will be out probably right after the Veterans Day week, and then I'll be able to project to you, to the next board meeting, where that looks. Right now, I'm showing this on budget on state aid. I'll give you, as I do every year, an analysis as soon as those aid runs come out. So again, in play, we have, you know, the Glenn Warren Special Ed programs that are in-house. As you, students could be going out, they could be staying in. That'll affect your, your numbers. Health insurance, I'm showing you a savings, but also including those numbers, a set aside in case we have problems with prescription drugs or a call on our self-funded. So if we don't, that'll come back to surplus at the end of the year. Right now, I don't want to give you what I have to take away, possibly. So I'm giving you all these keynotes to remind you, and I'll remind myself, that these are factors that, right now, are in your numbers. They could generate a favorable trend down the road. So with that, I'll answer any and all questions.
Thanks, Drew.
Now, do you mind if I go ahead?
No, good.
I'm sorry. You said that, or how I read the memo, which I could be reading it wrong with all my questions, you said that we had about 437,000 savings in the special ed, partially because of grants? Are these grants, grants that are every year, or are they, will we have these grants next year? Or is that just what we happen to have this year?
Those are the federal 611 and 619, which we have every year, unless the feds sequester funds. Right now, they haven't, and those are real savings. So what we do there is, if we have a special education teacher funded by a grant, I also incorporate them into the general fund, so that if the grant goes away, we don't lose that position, because we need the position. So when the grant is realized, we create a savings. That's basically generates your cash flow, working capital in that area. That helps answer your question.
Okay. And then you said that there was some savings, 284,000 with respect to state aid. Can you explain what you meant by that?
On state aid?
Yeah.
That was overall revenues right now. That I'm saying, 284,000 overall, which was basically the pilots. State aid I have on budget right now, because I don't have the aid runs. So I basically show that we have some favorable trend in the revenue based on the pilots, interest income a little bit. Nothing major at this point, it's only half a percent favorable, I believe.
Okay.
Not state aid, that's, I'm showing that on budget right now, because I don't have aid runs until they come out this week, probably.
So, but the reason it only ends up being about 501 is because you had to spend more than was expected? Was security and secretarial and CSE and psychological services and administrative.
Yes, the swing in the numbers, I'm showing half a million, special ed was like almost 600,000, but it was mitigated by some things we had to reallocate. The superintendent's office has a leave of absence. So we're basically funding a position with supplemental help and temporary help and so forth. So I kind of went through that to show you how volatile the numbers are once you adopt a budget. As you all know, things happen. We have to reallocate and cover them. Does that help?
Yes. So with respect to the expenditure savings, it looks like it's about 1.5 million in savings? That last paragraph on the first page of your memo? Because you said expenditure savings are primarily generated in instructional costs, employee benefits, transportation, et cetera. That's about 1.5 million we're saving?
1.6 is the savings, or 2.41%, which almost a million is coming from the instructional side. Primarily from grant subsidies and the title in 611 and 619.
And then you said that the undesignated fund balance in June of 2026 is expected to be almost $2 million more than it was in June of 2025, right?
No.
No?
Saying it's basically, right now, about, it's going up 1.9 from, we ended at 1.1. That'll give you 3 million. So, the first, how I laid it out, shows you, is the audited financial show 1,137,873. The surplus projected this year generates 1,892. That gets you to a 3,032,30. And what I'm showing the board, and I went over this with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, we used 4.0, almost 4.4 million last year to appropriate. So I'm just trying to show the board, that's what we want to get to, to close that gap.
Okay. So is that 1.3 million? Is that how much more we'd need to be in order to get everything we wanted this year, next year on the budget?
That's to be able to appropriate the same amount of money of fund balance that we did in the prior year. We need to generate another $1.3 million of savings, either through more revenue, spending less, combination thereof.
So what are you projecting the gap to be between the two budgets? Between, in order to have everything we've got this year, next year, what would that gap be? Approximately, and I know it's a projection, it's not a definitive.
When we finished the budget last year, I did a slide that was projecting about 2.7 was the gap.
And are you still projecting that gap to be the same based on this report?
This report has nothing to do with that going forward. This is trying to get to appropriate that, you know. If we don't generate this surplus to get to the 4 million, then the gap gets worse. But we have reserves we could use for one year or two, and just go through those, and we haven't done that in a while. It's way too early. But what I projected to the board last year was, we're in a 2.7, $3 million gap.
Right, I just wasn't sure what, if anything, we can use from this fiscal projection to help us determine where we are, based on the savings we've had versus what we spent to see where we are on that gap for next year.
You need to get another $1.3 million of surplus to use the same amount of fund balance that you used last year in lieu of raising taxes. Okay?
So, and I apologize, I am definitively not a math person, so I'm not questioning your math or anything. I just want to make sure I understand. So we're, no matter what, we're already at the 2.7 million gap. But you're saying if we don't find this other one. But you're saying if we don't find this other one point three, now we're at four million?
When I give you the first draft in February, you'll know. That was based on about a year ago, we did the budget, actually in the spring. You're looking forward to, we hadn't even gone through, like hired anybody, this and that. I don't have aid runs from the governor for the budget in January, a lot of assumptions. But things that I assume will happen, that we get a half a million dollar increase in state aid, whole harmless. And our expenses roll over at four or five percent a year, we have that gap. But what's gonna happen is what happens when you start putting pen, you know, pencil to the paper. What I'm trying to show you here is that, because Karin J made this comment to me last year. It's like when I say favorable and I'm very explicit, it's underspending or more revenue than we budgeted. You also gotta look at what we've been using historically to balance our budget, which is our fund balance. The day we don't meet the same obligation as the prior year creates a dullness, creates a hole. So, we need to get to that four point three. Right now, we're a million three short. Can we make it up? We can. If we have fortuitous year and we don't have anything bad happen and yet, you know, like we had. But last year, we didn't. We were a million dollars short. Remember, we were a million dollars for the first time because we had a double win. We had the special ed and we had the health insurance drug problem with drugs. So, I can't predict the future. I can lay it out what the impact is of what we have. So, does that make sense?
It does. So, I just wanna make it very clear that when you're saying favorable, you're just using an economic term that we were spent, we spent less than what was budgeted. It has nothing to do with our numbers being favorable for what we're gonna have next year.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we hit a rainbow or a pot of gold.
Right. And as of now, it still looks like a two point seven million dollar gap.
I would think, yes.
That's all I have, right? Other than, can you, can we put this on line? Not my copy, because I wrote all over it. Somebody's copy.
It's a nice breakdown.
We can put that with our meaning. Thank you, Kathy.
Mike?
This might be a little bit early, but when we figure out what we're doing with the four elementary schools, how, what's the process of getting the budget lines to us depending on which way everybody decides to go? Is that an arduous process that's gonna take months or weeks or years? Or, like, I know we have the budget season coming. Is it, is it a couple day kind of thing, or is it...
No, Mike, it's a good question. I have all the models set up that I can, I can move the chess pieces pretty quickly based on how I set it up.
Well, I know you did the budget like sixty-five times last year. I saw it. So, if we could avoid that, that would be good. And am I supposed to mention a magic wand or a crystal ball? Or does that help?
But once I know the direction, there's not gonna be a long time to get you your numbers.
Okay, they're not mine. I just, I wanna know, like, just so we have an idea. Because I know that there's, there's a lot of, we're playing chess on a vibrating table. That's what it feels like.
No, it's not gonna be a long process to, because it was set up last year, the models, of what we, the scenarios could be. Once I know what the school is and what the, what the bumping is and so, then I, I start working on it. I don't, you know, so... That helps?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, in a second, for a resolution to accept the report of the tax collector.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution to accept the report of the tax collector.
Thanks, Chad, in a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Kim. Questions, comments on this?
My question. So, Drew, can I remind me again of the uncollected? What happens with that, how do we get it collected? Or do we even get it collected?
It gets turned over to each of the counties that are in our taxing jurisdiction. So, Schenectady County will make us whole on what hasn't been collected on the Glenville Village. Saratoga County will make us whole on Charlton. And Montgomery will make us whole on the town of Amsterdam. So, we get that money usually in February, March.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, resolution ten, to increase the debt service reserve fund.
A motion to increase the debt service fund, reserve fund, sorry.
Thanks, Kim. Second.
I will second.
Thanks, Mike. Have any questions on this or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, to approve an MOA, item number eleven?
Make a motion to approve MOA by the, by and to the Scotia Central School District and Scotia Central Teacher Association, if permitted.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Kim, questions on this, comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, to approve MOA, item number twelve?
I'll move to approve the memorandum of agreement by and between Scotia Central School District and the Scotia Glenville Teachers Association.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Chad? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved, thank you. If I get a motion, please, we can do a request for two clubs, items thirteen and fourteen, please.
I make a motion to request to establish a Scotia Glenville High School later D task force and the Scotia Glenville High School test form, if permitted.
Thank you, Jack. In a second. Thanks, Kim. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on these two items.
Yes.
I've had a few conversations with the coordinators of these clubs, the student coordinators. And it becomes clear how enthusiastic they are about sharing their hobbies. And we just kind of move past these, we approve them, and don't really take a second glance. But I think it's worth mentioning the profoundness, the impact that approving these has, because this is giving students an opportunity to get, to make connections with each other, with other people who share their hobbies, and then also with their school and with the district. So, I'm very happy to see these.
Absolutely, so are we. Thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. Anything else? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, for resolution fifteen?
I'd like to make a motion to accept a gift and donation from the Charlton Fire Department.
Thank you, Chad, in a second?
I will second.
Thank you both. Questions, comments?
I just have one comment. I, I'm, just wanna make sure, I've been told that on the agenda anyways, Nicholas's name is not spelled correctly. It should be N-I-C-H-O-L-A-S?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure it's spelled correctly everywhere it needs to be spelled.
Thank you. So, we will move this with correction of spelling.
I just wanna say thank you to the Charlton Fire Department. That's a testament to the character of Mr. Chris Goan. And really, that was...
Absolutely.
Pretty phenomenal, thank you.
Nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved. If the board likes, we can get a motion, please, on resolutions sixteen and seventeen?
A motion to approve the authority for the Board of Education members to approve appointments of hearing officers and to approve IHO appointment.
In a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion on communications and staffing, please?
I'll move communications, A, to staff.
Staffing one to nineteen and replacement of students with disabilities.
Thank you, Pam.
I'll second.
Kim. Questions, comments on this? Anybody? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? I abstain. All right, moving on to routine business, children, the budget transfers, October of twenty-five. Any questions, comments on that? All right, so moving on to other business, the twenty-four, twenty-five energy analysis. Drew, is there anything you'd like to mention on that or questions, if we have any?
It just shows the continued support from the board and the community on our infrastructure improvements. All the way back to when we put solar panels on, you know, solar arrangement, remote metering, all the LED lighting, the heating system replacements district-wide. We've been able to maintain the budget in these areas so we could put money to program and not to, you know, energy costs which are escalating. But, so I thank the board and the community for letting us do this and keep these numbers pretty stable. Also shows the benefit of being in a statewide consortium for electrical and gas. Helps us with our prices. Can't control delivery, unfortunately, but it's really allowed us to have a smooth utility in my twenty years, not impacting things adversely like it does at our homes. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone have any questions on that?
I actually have a lot of questions on it. And I, I'm asking a lot of these questions because I think that it also needs to be a part of the evaluation as to which school is closing, depending on the amount of utilities that is being used. But I also found some things that were confusing to me. One of the things I noticed that for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, there was a large increase in the previous year, but that was because it was a new contract, correct? So, with respect to the prices, we shouldn't expect a huge jump from last year to this year. Usage obviously depends on the weather and all of that. So, we probably won't have such a big jump, am I...
Shouldn't, but it was the, it wasn't utilization, it was the price increase. While we're in the middle of bidding on a new contract statewide, so yeah, you shouldn't see it this year. It should be more stable.
But we may see it next year because we have to renegotiate, it looks like, in the spring of twenty twenty-six.
Who knows, yeah, who knows what the market's gonna be?
That's, so that's something else that could affect our budget gap as well. Okay. With respect to working with the utilities, how much negotiation actually goes on?
The consortium does that with, when they do with the bids, they actually do a statewide bid. So, that's done for us. It's a, NISMIG is who it is. I think it's the town, Anadagui Municipality, whatever, Bozese that does it. So, they do all that. They have their energy experts that do all this. And we've benefited from it. Our budget has gone up probably nothing in the last ten years. We've been creeping up to getting to it though, as you can see. But we used to, we benefit tremendously from their expertise, so...
Okay. So, it's not just the utility telling us this is how much it's gonna cost? There is some, there is back and forth on that?
There's power in numbers, so, yeah.
Okay. With respect to, when I was looking at the numbers on the, for the totals, it looks like Glendale spent significantly more than the other three elementary schools, by about thirty thousand more.
Per square foot, yeah, because they're oil. They're the only school that's on oil. The rest are, are on gas, gas and electric, but they're oil.
Okay, so that was gonna be, that leads to my next question. So, they don't have gas?
Nope.
Okay, that's why the line is blank on the gas line?
Correct.
But they would be the only one, I didn't, did I see an oil line on here?
Nope, they're the only oil.
Oh, here, okay. So, the oil is the issue. Is there any discussion about changing that or no?
Not that I know of.
Okay. How did they end up being oil versus...
Probably because they don't run, I don't know, something up there that don't run the lines up there or something. It's like being on septic versus, you know, sewer.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Is there, and I also noticed with respect to Glen Warden, they actually, out of the four elementary schools, including SAC, they spent the most on electricity and gas. Do we know why that is?
Could be because of the programs there and the different requirements, you know? I don't know. It's the same square footage as Glen...
Right, that's why I was surprised.
Glen Warden's oil. They have a new heating system. Lincoln just got theirs finished. SAC and Doggo's got a heating, new heating system. Middle School, still on the same heating system. They haven't, we've upgraded, but they're still the same. High School got a new boiler system in eleven. So, it could be just when you have certain programs, you gotta run air conditioning more than you do in other schools, Kim. So, it's more of the economy of the school than...
Okay.
Infrastructure, so...
All right, so for me personally, I thought this was a very interesting study into how much each school utilizes with respect to utilities. And I do think it would be an important factor to look at with respect to a part of financially, which, which is the appropriate school to, to be closed. So, that's all I have, thank you. Thanks for explaining everything.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kim, Drew. Any other questions on that? Any other, other business?
Just a reminder that your board secretary does want to stay there. We'll have pizza and salad for snack around five thirty and be ready to roll. If you have any other topics you'd like to discuss, any attorneys, please make sure you pass them on to Howard. Thank you.
My question for Drew. I know the electric process has been quiet for a while now. Are we doing good bidding? I know we have a timeline of bidding to get grants.
So, we're almost on the final stages of getting an electrification plan approved by NISERTA. And that allows us to get these incentives, so we're gonna have that finalized pretty soon. We just did our RVP for the removal of the Buick building, which is, shows the state that we're trying to, and no one bid on it. So, when we proposed to, probably in the spring for another proposition, that'll get demolished to run this thing through there. So, does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Question, thank you.
I had a question I forgot to ask before when you were talking about the reimagining, the committees. We were talking about the, and I know I'm gonna say this, around the non-transportation zones. What are we currently doing for our elementary school kids? What's the range, the zone for non-transportation?
Seven tenths of a mile is what we, I...
They're told, yeah.
We were told seven tenths of a mile, but there are certain walkways that you can't cross. Train tracks and unmanned or unwomded or unguarded crosswalks.
And is that for all the grade levels or just elementary?
There's only two elementary school levels. Kindergartners, I don't believe, can walk. I think they get bust. I think all of the SAC kid, the SAC kids get bust. There are no non-walkers at Glendale or Glen Ward.
Okay, thank you.
And I could be a hundred percent wrong, I'm just...
One kid does walk at Glendale, gets parents across the street with him because his bus ride's too long.
But it was seven tenths of a mile was the, the walking zone. But New York State allows up to two miles.
Okay, I remembered the two miles, but I wasn't sure if we had discussed what the, what we're currently doing.
We're running better than New York State.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. All right, if nothing else, I will open up the second hearing, privilege of the floor. Remind everyone, the board's allotted thirty minutes to that. If anyone would like to address the board, please step to the podium. Just give us your name, address, and adhere to our five-minute policy. All right, if no one, I will close the second hearing, privilege of the floor. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'd just like to thank all the veterans out there for your service to our country tomorrow as we celebrate Veterans Day. So, thank you very much. Sorry?
Yes, thank you, Chad.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chad.
And on that note, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, abstain? Thank you very much. See everybody Wednesday night.
Thank you, Drew, I appreciate it.